This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and sorry for the delay. I'm going to officially open up the Southampton Planning Board meeting for December 4th, 2024. We have Quorum here tonight, Dan LaValle, Stephen Johnson, Mark Darnold, myself, Paul Demon, and listening audience there at Channel 191. So the first item we have on the agenda this evening is an A&R. And it's kind of like a two-for-one here tonight. We have two separate applications, but for their same property. Cheryl Bishista of 220 Pomeroy Meadow Road and Roger Bishop of 224 Pomeroy Meadow Road are making a parcel exchange in land that they own. And Cheryl, maiden name was Bishista. It's the same family property that they've had for years. And is Cheryl going to present tonight just to say what's going on? Or just to give a, just a brief, it's pretty well clear-cut what's going on, but Cheryl probably can just give a little spiel to us. And in full disclosure, I am a direct-of-butter, have been for 20 years, but I have no financial interest in this. But I was advised to just disclose that, as it will have no bearing on the A&R itself. So Cheryl, if you just would like to tell us that it looks like you're swapping, you and your brother Roger, who lives next door to 220, are just swapping a little bit of land back and forth.
Yeah, you can see the current piece that is for 220 right now.
Yep.
We're adding, I believe it's 1.8 acres, going back straight to the Manhattan River. And then he's getting a little chunk of land back, so that way he doesn't have to go down a steep hill when he's trying to get to his own land. And that's the only reason we're swapping that back.
So as you can see on the map, just for everybody's purposes, parcel 1A, 1.28 acres. And they're doing a swap for that versus parcel 2A, which is like 1,500 square feet. And this land is in Chapter 61, right? And that won't be affecting...
61B.
Yep, and it won't be affecting anything. It's not being taken out of 61B. It's just a swap between family members to essentially give a right of way. Questions from the board at all? Straight forward.
Agreed.
Stephen?
How is it that Bishista... How is it that parcel 2 and 1A continue to qualify for Chapter?
Roger Bishop is my brother. My maiden name is Bishop. And if it's the same family, you can keep it the same. Nothing was going to change. Because he already has it in 61B.
Yeah, parcel...
You're aware of it. Otherwise, he'd be below the minimum acre.
He has over five acres. I believe he... I don't have a map right in front of me, so I can't...
Yeah, it's 11 and 1/2 that he actually has. And he's adding 1,500 feet to that.
I'm sorry. You're Cheryl?
Yes.
So you will be receiving 1A?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And you will in total own about three acres and change?
Approximately, yes.
Right. And tell me again how that will continue to qualify for... This is outside the A&R. I want everyone to understand.
As far as I...
We opened the dialogue, and I want you to be fully cognizant, you're...
I've been in contact with a lawyer's office, and they told me as long as it was from siblings, and we weren't changing anything with the parcel that he is turning over to me, we can leave it in the 61B.
If you've checked with the assessors, that's the real answer, so...
Yeah, I told them that he's my brother, and they said as long as it's a family member.
They are the authority.
Okay.
Stop editorializing. We're here to endorse a plan that requires no approval if it's found to be in compliance with dimensional requirements of zoning. It certainly appears to be.
As far as I knew, that's why I was saying what I was saying. That's what I was told, so that's what I'm saying.
And again, you were, as I thought, ahead of me, because you checked with the assessors. And that is, again, for the record, whatever I say. It's of interest to the town generally, that people understand their rights and responsibilities under Chapter. We want to promote the successful and happy use of Chapter. But I've seen many, many people frustrated with some of the process. So I just raised a question, and I'm not an authority. You sought the answer from the right authority. I'm done. I'm ready to vote.
Mark, anything?
No.
I'm just going to get straight forward. That being the case, I will entertain a motion to endorse the A&R of Roger Bishop and Cheryl Bishista.
I move.
I'm second.
Thank you.
Motion's made by Dan and seconded by Stephen. Any other further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you're set to go, Cheryl. And again, I will sign these in the morning and get them over to Heritage and I'm sure Robert will get in contact with you from there. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to take the big copy, please.
Okay. Thank you for sending that along. Good night. See you. All right, next in your packet, and also the applicant has provided a big packet here for the next agenda item here for a residential solar mount. The unit is being installed by, is it Savcat or Saabcot?
Savcat.
Savcat, out of Connecticut. And it's for Mark Gerard, who is here tonight at One Cook Road. And I believe we have representative from Savcat, Ben, here to present and go over the plan with us. And again, I think I told you folks, originally, Richard Harris went over the application and sent them a review of things to check on. And because our bylaw is outdated, under normal circumstances, this project would be a building permit in most of our surrounding communities. But because our bylaw is old and outdated, we have to go through this process. And it's considered in our bylaw an intermediate kind of a project, which in fact, in any other community, it would be small scale, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could you please focus on what power zoning requires or doesn't? I'd like to be able to track that and not an editorial.
I think it's, I think it's in the packet, that what they're referring to. And then I'll have Mr. Ben come up here and ask that. We go from there.
Yeah, so it's 17-kilowatt DC system size ground array that we're looking to have installed on the Cook Road property there, One Cook Road. The array would be located to the south of the residence, kind of between the home, the residence and the barn. There are a few trees that will be removed as part of the preparation for the array and ensure it's performing as expected. And those are the basics. What other questions do we have? I know part of the zoning requirements, we need to check on the watershed districts and whatnot, which it appears from the mapping online that it's, there's nothing, no water district or anything overlapping under their property. So there shouldn't be any issues there.
Water district?
Or, I might not be using the right terminology.
You know what you're talking about.
There's one, I was screening through our bylaw, and they talk about Water Supply Protection District 2. I just saw it.
District 2?
Sorry, I got to find it.
Not Zone 2?
Zone 2, there it is, yep. Location of floodplain areas, as well as the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, Zone 2. The site plan showing that. But if there isn't one, then...
So I noticed that the zoning reference was to the county. And the county's never had that authority, and the county's been disbanded. And so you're here to be reviewed by this authority, and that's the key piece. Are you in the groundwater protection overlay district or are you...
No. No, it is not.
It's different from whether you're served by public water.
Correct.
By the way, conservation, George Russell received the plan, and he had no issues with any conservation issues whatsoever.
Right, but he's not in charge of the groundwater?
I understand that, but I'm just interjecting that it went to conservation.
So could you explain what relief from the town of Southampton zoning you're seeking?
I'm sorry, what we're seeking from the zoning?
Yeah, I mean, obviously a permit.
Yeah, we're looking for...
It's been flagged that you need some relief, and I'd like you to expound on what relief you need.
I think, did you see his cover letter?
I'd like him to summarize it for us, and the people on television have not...
Well, we can't...
Seen and cannot see any of this.
We can't advertise that via television, Stephen. So would you please just go over your letter that you sent?
This is the letter here. Did you guys all have a copy of it?
Exactly.
So, yeah, and I apologize. I don't know all the 100% exact details here. Our project managers have been working on this and briefed me a little bit earlier today. I'm the general manager at Savcat, so I oversee things at a higher level there, but...
You're not Kelly, then?
I'm not Kelly, no, no.
You are.
Kelly's our permit coordinator, yeah. So she put all this together for me.
Right. I'm having a hard time hearing you, and I didn't catch your name up front.
Ben.
Ben, thank you.
Yep, so...
Vice President of Savcat. Thank you.
So my understanding is there's, you guys have a category for small, what's considered small solar, which is 16 kilowatts or less of DC. This happens to be slightly over that, at 17, which I believe the medium goes from 16 all the way, over 16 all the way up to 250 kilowatts, which is a pretty wide range. So, yeah, my understanding is that the conversations that Kelly and perhaps Jeff, our project coordinator, have had with Paul leading up to this meeting, they drafted this letter for us, seeking some relief to be considered under a section, I believe it's H or G rather than H, is that correct? In the small category versus the large, or the medium, which has, I think, a few more...
It's more for...
Items to look at for, that do seem to be more for larger-scale commercial projects, where you might have more concerns of water runoff and things like that from, you know, the ground clearing and whatnot, where this is more of a typical residential-sized project to power to home.
So that seems correct to me, just as a layperson, that you're really in the scope of what is a single-family residence kind of application. But I just want to make sure that the public and we are clear what the hell we're doing here. And in order for that, you need to be clear what you're asking.
Sure, I got you.
So 17, rather than our threshold of 16, I get that, gives you relief from having to meet the intermediate standards.
Correct.
Standards for an intermediate-sized ground mount, which runs all the way up to 250?
Yes.
Kilowatts, so... You said it's land disturbance and runoff that comes into play in the intermediate scale? Maybe the chair is familiar with this and walk us through his conversation with our consultant, for which we pay.
Because the intermediate in large scale with commercial have far much more criteria that are not outlined in our, on our current bylaws when it comes to residential. So there's not a, the area of disturbance required for even meeting any, anywhere near that. I put in the basic criteria on 275, 7.6 of all the submission material. And I believe in the letters that I received from Kelly Bradley is that they're looking for waivers on anything over and above that, because it's considered a commercial installment.
Right, so anything over and above. I'm just trying to get some specifics on the record, Chair. And again, you're resisting any amount of specific information shared with the public and often is not shared with the committee.
Well, seeing as we had done residential before...
In consideration of the applicant...
Seeing as we have done residential before...
In consideration of the applicant, I would like to signal that I'm in support of this waiver to consider it a small-scale installation, notwithstanding that it's 1 kilowatt hour, over.
Well, that's a roundabout way of getting it, but thank you.
Okay.
You'll get it every time you withhold information.
I'm sure, I'm sure. I went over the list, and I'm very happy with the plan that was proposed, with the diagrams, the GPS. I looked over myself. There's, I can't get over the amount of screening you have around the entire property when it comes to all the butters. It's a bigger parcel than I ever thought you had, but there's a lot of trees there.
I haven't studied it. It's not with the chairs.
In most cases, where we have these, it's somebody's backyard, and there's not much screening of any sort. So I'm happy to see that. It's not going to be visible to many million members. Please tell me one thing. You said you have to remove five trees. Is that where the installation's going now? Because you couldn't find another place on the property for that? Is that it?
Yeah, I mean, the desired location was to keep the array within, you know, less than 100 feet from the home, and then also have, you know, sun exposure throughout the day. And my understanding, if we were to go a little further to the south, it would have been more in the middle of, is that a horse pasture?
Yep.
Yeah, in the middle of the horse pasture. So we wanted, they wanted to keep it closer to the edge of that, closer to the home, for the ease of installation and access to their pasture there.
Looks like it's going to service, is that going to service the barn as well? That's the whole property?
It's all. They have one service and one meter for the whole property, so the power goes everywhere.
Hello.
How you doing?
Welcome. Any other questions, Mark? Dan?
I agree with the assessment. It meets all the criteria.
Do I have a motion then, if you've got all the information? That a motion should be predicated on the waivers that have been asked regarding the intermediate project. So whoever makes the motion...
I move that we, in conjunction with approving the waiver to adjust, this is a small project, to allow it to be in the category of small, even though it is 17-watt versus the 16.5 criteria. And assuming the waiver is approved, part of the motion that the project be approved as well.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded by Stephen. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
All's going abstained. Thank you, and I will get that decision off to you in the next day or two.
No, Kelly, our...
Before you go, while you're still on the clock, we are going to be revisiting this bylaw the first of the year. And our consultant has looked through various communities, and I put it in everyone's packet there. And I thought, just from your standpoint, maybe to help us going forward with a couple of ideas. Right now, and he looked at different communities, and they rate them as small, intermediate, medium, and large. Now, in your experience, small is probably building permit only, correct, by right?
Generally, yeah.
And by small, you're talking how many KW or...
I mean, by residential standards in Massachusetts, I would say like 25 kilowatts or less is pretty typically would be considered. I mean, you don't see a lot of residential above that. Most states or jurisdictions, when you start considering commercial, are usually looking at like 100 or 200 kilowatts as like what they consider small commercial.
Well, what we've been finding...
But for ground, I understand for what these purposes, probably that's...
Well, what we've been finding is to eliminate this type of a process with butter notification and notice, et cetera, et cetera, and special permit, site plan review, we're finding that most of them, under 250 are by building permit.
250 kilowatts, yeah, that's more typical as far as overall.
So what would you consider 250 being large or intermediate or...
Yeah, I would say 200, 250 is typically where you would go into like a medium category within most states around here.
Or large?
Large, they usually start thinking about like a megawatt, like a thousand kilowatts.
Now, in terms of area disturbance, 25K or less isn't going to disturb anywhere near an acre of land.
No.
When do you start getting into disturbance when it comes to scale? The acreage?
Residentially, it's, you're talking almost never. That's a good question. I haven't really thought about that. But probably in that medium category of like 200 kilowatts. And it's going to depend on the terrain, too, of, you know, are you clearing an acre of trees or is it a acre of, you know, an open pasture, too? So as far as disturbance of land and how level is the land? So it's more, it's hard to put a finger on the exact size, I guess.
All right, so my question is also, what's the average kilowatt or installation for like a single-family home or like a multifamily home? What's your average for KW?
An average residential project is like probably about 11 kilowatts, 10, 10, 11 kilowatts.
And for like a two or three family, would that still hold true or no?
That might be more in the, you know, 18 to 20 kilowatt range.
You wouldn't really do one for a multifamily?
Well, there's some, the FON utility regulations around those, so... But we do work, like we've done some, we recently did one somewhere here in Western Mass. I can't remember which town. It was about 18 kilowatts, I think, about 17, 18 kilowatts, about the size of this. It was covering a two-family home. And as long as there's roof space, you know, that was a roof-mounted system, so there wasn't any extra zoning or anything like that considered there. That's pretty typical for a two-family sized home. And with the, you can share the metering and things like that through the national grid and ever-source. So you really just tie into one meter typically, and they would share the power between the two different bills there.
On the average single-family house, what's the maximum installation you can do? I mean, I know it goes where the house is faced, but saying it's facing south, what's the maximum you can put on a single-family house KW?
It's pretty much this, this is the maximum that the utilities let us do right now on a residential, about 17 kilowatts.
Oh, you could, you can do that much, really, huh?
Yeah, they have, they actually, they have a limitation on the AC system size, so the inverter that we're using here, a 10-kilowatt inverter. So they don't let you go any higher than that right now.
Well, thank you. I don't mean to keep you, but we've got our homework to do going forward to revise this. So any information we can get?
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, feel free to reach out if you guys have other questions. And I'm sure you've been in communication with Kelly, our permit coordinator, as far as the next steps on all this. Yep.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mark. And Mark, by the way, was the chairman of this board when I came on board many years ago. Mark Gerard.
You're welcome.
Good night, good luck. Happy holidays. Does anybody else want to expound on this? I guess we've got to digest it, what Richard sent, but he did quite a bit of homework on it himself. So we can straighten this out, because in January, we have another one that is coming up, that's been continued, that was put off because it's actually small scale, but by our standards, it's again intermediate. And then I just got an email last week. There's another one on Pleasant Street that's coming before us, for another residential. So it behooves us, I guess, to get this straightened out sooner or later. It's not going to help the next two applicants, but maybe if we can do this before next town meeting, we can get something on the books for...
So this has to go through town?
Yeah, we got to revise it. It has to be public hearing and then put on the warrant for town zoning change. I have nothing else other than a warrant that Richard sent me this afternoon for the month of November, but I can delay that because on the next agenda item. Is there any other committee report or other business that anyone would like to undertake or comment on?
I think we're good.
The warrant I had for Richard's is in your, I believe I put it in the packet. Last item there for $1,080 for the month of November. Some of that I'm going to see if I can retrieve from the Select Board, because we had a couple of things that not only EverSource, but recently had an inquiry about non-conforming use over on Pequot Road that he had to do some research on for the building inspector and the town administrator. that he had to do some research on for the building inspector and the town administrator. So it incurred some charges on our account, which I don't think is fair, but I'll see if I can get some money out of them to pay for Richard's consulting. But anyway, at this point, I'll ask for a motion to pay Richard Harris for November $1,080.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Paul, seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstained because it wasn't on the agenda. Move to adjourn?
Has anybody got anything else? Hearing done. I will move to adjourn. Who's going to move? Stephen, you've got a second?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's up with the door outside?
I don't know.
I've been knocking. I was like, oh, no.